George. Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Flynn. Councilor Garrison. Councilor Janey. Councilor McCarthy. Councilor O'Malley. Councilor Wu. And Councilor Zachem. And Councilor McCarthy is here.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I am informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, our lovely clerk is going to bring us through the invocation, so I ask all guests, staff, and my colleagues to please rise. I ask that you remain standing after the invocation as he leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Councilor. Good afternoon, everyone. Let us pray. God of creation, whom we try again and again to make into our own image, enable us to desire rightly and to be of use in the service of others. Be with this Boston City Council in its work and grant them the wisdom to create what is essential for the common good. Keep within each of these hearts a love for the cause of human welfare and a dedication to enrich the lives of all people. Guide them in their labor to maintain and strengthen our public lives and remind them to be good stewards of the gift of life. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did I miss Garrison? Mr. Clerk, if you could amend the attendance record to reflect that Council Garrison is here. Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Clerk. Moving on to approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes are so approved. Moving on to communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Docket number 1424, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $236,400 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 20 Local Cultural Council Program awarded by the Massachusetts Cultural Council to be administered by the Arts and Culture. The grant will fund Boston Cultural Council subgrants.
Docket 1424 will be assigned to the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events. Yes, Mr. Clerk, if you could read, actually, if you could read dockets. Yes, actually, dockets 1425 through 1438 together, that'd be great. Thank you.
Docket number 1425, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Anne Beha as a member of the zoning board of appeals for a term ending July 1, 2021. Docket number 1426, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Timothy Burke as a member of the zoning board of appeals for a term ending July 1, 2021. Docket number 1427, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Susanna Gasper as a member of the Back Bay Architectural Commission for a term ending December 31, 2024. Docket number 1428, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Meredith Christensen as a member of the Back Bay Architectural Commission for a term ending December 31, 2022. Docket number 1429, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Kathleen Connor as a member of the Back Bay Architectural Commission for a term ending December 31, 2021. Docket number 1430, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of John Christensen as a member of the Back Bay Architectural Commission for a term ending December 31, 2023. Docket number 1431, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Jerome Cooper King as a member of the Back Bay Architectural Commission for a term ending December 31, 2023. Docket number 1432, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of James Burkmann as a member of the Back Bay Architectural Commission for a term ending December 31, 2021. Docket number 1433, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Ethel McLeod as a member of the Back Bay Architectural Commission for a term ending December 31, 2024. Docket number 1434, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of John Freeman as a member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a term ending June 30, 2021. Docket number 1435, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Susan Goganian as a member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a term ending June 30, 2021. Docket number 1436, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Joseph Castro as a member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a term ending June 30, 2020. Docket number 1437, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Bradford Walker as a member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a term ending June 30, 2020. And docket number 1438, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Christopher Hart as an alternate member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a term ending June 30, 2021.
Dockets 1425 through 1438 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Moving on to reports of public officers and others, Mr. Clerk, if we could read dockets 1439 through, let's see, 1440.
Docket number 1439, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Raymond Bowley as a member of the Board of Review effective October 3, 2019. And docket number 1440, notice was received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 4:30 p.m. on Thursday, October 3, 2019, until 9:30 p.m. on Saturday, October 5, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Dockets 1439 through 1440 will be placed on file. Before I move on to the next docket, I just want to quickly acknowledge I saw a group of young, fabulous-looking young people in the chamber here for a council meeting. We always appreciate youth in our presence, and I've learned they're from the Hernandez School. So thank you guys so much for being here. We appreciate you being here and participating. I just want to give you guys a quick shout out and a big round of applause on behalf of all of us. Thank you. Thank you, you guys. Mr. Clerk, if we could read the next docket.
Docket number 1441, communication from City Council large Michelle Wu regarding a report fixing Boston's broken development process. Why and how to abolish the BPDA?
Council Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to officially transmit the report through the council agenda, given that this is largely a report back of my time and learnings and research and conversations and findings, serving as chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. So I owe you all bound, color, easier-to-read copies. We run out of the printing run that we had just done for earlier in the week, and so those will be delivered to your offices. But you can see the black-and-white version in the packet. Essentially, the report runs through a few different sections. One on the history and legacy of the Boston Redevelopment Authority, now BPDA, what it has accomplished in the city's neighborhoods and why it was created, because that underpins a lot of how that agency continues to function today. Section two is a comparison to what the city of Boston might be missing out on if we continue to do development in this way, which is parcel-by-parsel and really focused on special approvals and exceptions rather than big-picture citywide master planning to drive local planning, to drive clearer zoning and rules that apply across the board. So section two includes many best practices from other cities, focusing particularly on five pieces: setting clear rules to match community needs through planning and zoning, transparency, accountability, civic engagement, which I think might be the most important section of all, ways to really tie everyone into the process of thinking about what their communities and neighborhoods and cities should look like. And then finally, how all of the issues are actually connected and flow from how we think about planning at a large scale. Our challenges around housing affordability, around mobility, traffic congestion, around the climate crisis, and equity are directly related to how and whether we are addressing all of them together in a big-picture way rather than parcel-by-parcel. The third section is really explaining that it's a complicated process, but one that is fairly straightforward. There are three processes that could happen concurrently if the city wanted to move forward with abolishing the BPDA and setting up a different planning structure in its place. The first would be to restore city control, realizing that the BPDA is self-funded now and therefore not subject to city council oversight, doesn't have to come before us for the same type of up-or-down vote on their budget and the scrutiny and transparency that comes along with that. And that also drives the incentives for the agency. Because their properties and their revenue streams fund their operations, that happens on its own. We could, the city and the BPDA, could immediately move, transfer the assets of the BPDA, the property that they own, onto the city's books and then have that revenue stream to have a city planning department and other functions that essentially would transfer over. And we map it out in the report onto existing city departments, but all of that would be democratically accountable and subject to city oversight, just as every other department has to interact with the city council in that way. Secondly, is on urban renewal areas, and I know so many of us have been at those meetings every six months about how and why and when urban renewal impacts the city. It is a set of extraordinary powers that was given out in response to a federal movement to displace, demolish, and facilitate large-scale development, and it no longer matches the needs of Boston today. When we're thinking about development, the challenge is not so much how to facilitate massive, large-scale projects, but rather to manage the growth in a way that's livable, equitable, sustainable for everyone. And finally, there will be state approvals needed. The BRA was created through an act of the state legislature, along with the zoning board of appeals and zoning commission and other issues that Council Edwards, for example, has been working on. It would require a final home rule petition to formalize things. But what I hope section three points out is that so much of it can functionally be accomplished right at the city level without any home rule petition whatsoever. And then finally, there is a set of steps that the city council could take immediately, you know, next week, next term, to start laying the groundwork and really having that process. What I want to emphasize most of all about this is that this is a first version. This is a starting point for a larger conversation about how we should be thinking of the city's future, how we should be engaging residents in having, say, into the trade-offs that are required to plan out that future. At the end of the day, planning, zoning, and development is all about trade-offs. We can't make everyone happy. It is impossible to be a growing city that preserves every inch of open space and the current heights and historic and all of that. However, how we have that conversation about the trade-offs, who gets to have the say, and what time scale we're talking about, whether it's this year, four years, or 100 years from now, that has a big, that makes a big difference in the results that we see as a city. And because we are such a historic city, I think it's important to not just look forward into what we would, the future that we can bring about if we think about planning in a different way that empowers residents, but also to look back and remember that the reason why we are the incredible city we are today with so many beautiful parts in every neighborhood and such history and culture is largely related to decisions that were made generations ago, in some cases, hundreds of years ago. So our decisions today will have tremendous impact as well. So we kicked off with a listening session in the South End. I want to thank Council Baker and Council Flaherty for being there. We will have many more. Council Edwards and I have one scheduled on both of, two pieces of work in East Boston next week. We're working on several others in different neighborhoods. So I look forward to having this long, thorough, inclusive, and iterative conversation, because ultimately, that is the type of process that I and I think many others would hope would replace the BPDA, and we need to model that even in talking about how we get there. So thank you very much. I look forward to your feedback.
Thank you very much, Council Wu. At this time, docket, oh, I apologize. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to, I don't want to get up and speak for or against this communication here, but what I would like to talk about is the difference in the BRA from the previous administration and this one that's happening right now. Previous administration, I was a sitting city councilor. Granted, I was enemy number one with the last, last. I think I was one. Did not even have a phone number in the BRA to contact people up there. This new BPDA, I've been through numerous planning initiatives. Dart Block was one of them that lasted for six years, a highly activated, thoughtful IAG planning process. South Bay, which I think is a win. Some of my colleagues tell me about how much they enjoy South Bay. South Bay was a four-year process with BPDA, with another thoughtful IAG process. We have Glover's Corner being planned. We have the Dorchester Carter being planned. So just to say that there's a lack of planning going on, I think, is a bit disingenuous. Glover's Corner, Glover's Corner backed with Glover's Corner, 66 units of affordable housing, of which 20 of them, I believe, will have a neighborhood preference done through work, through that IAG, through that planning process. An acre and a half of open space, 150 trees planted, a connection in between Meeting House Hill down to Savin Hill train station. So transportation plans, camera plans. Yeah, so I've had good experiences, not all great experiences. There's some that you walk away frustrated, but there is planning going on. I'm involved in my planning and just wanted to let that be known. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Baker. Anyone else looking to speak? Council Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you. I applaud my good friend from Rosendale. However, to have a report like this and not speak to those of us district councilors especially who've eaten, slept, and not slept a lot because of all these projects that we participate in, myself 12 years now. I can speak to a lot of dysfunction, but there's a lot of great people up there that do some very hard work, and it's about the Article 80 process. Now, we can, I didn't read the report yet, so I'm not going to, sitting here to be critical of the report. There's always room for improvement. However, I think the state of our city right now with the development boom going on, there's a lot of thoughtfulness going on. And to kind of imply that we're not talking about climate change or transportation impacts, that's all part of the process. And it's also kind of denigrating all the folks that serve on IAGs, all the people, regular folks, that we all get to nominate, to serve on these IAGs, that are the eyes and ears of the neighborhood that inform us as elected officials. I think, again, it pains me, because so many people give so much time and effort and thoughtfulness to these processes, and then not to include us, those of us who've done this for quite a while, I think it's missing a big piece. And again, having not read it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Siomo. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? At this time, docket 1441 will be placed on file. Moving on to reports of committees.
Docket number 1264, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on September 11, 2019. Docket number 1264, message in order approving a home rule petition to the general court entitled "An Act Authorizing the Boston Redevelopment Authority to Grant Easements for Utility Purposes Over a Portion of a Certain Parcel of Land Located in the City of Boston." submits a report recommending the home rule petition ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. These easements will allow existing property owners to, and their tenants, to update the utility infrastructure on the property and continue its current use. The committee held a hearing on docket 1264 back in September, and at the hearing, the committee discussed the address identification of the parcel, the scope of the project. The utilities company stated in the legislation whether approval was needed from the National Park Service, the feasibility of the timeline of the work that needs to be done with respect to the legislative process as well as the community process. The committee also heard testimony from members of the public and a variety of stakeholders. Rich McGinnis, Deputy Director of Climate Change and Environmental Planning for the BRA, spoke on behalf of the administration, explaining that these issues touches on Article 97 in the Commonwealth Constitution regarding protected open space. Deputy Director McGinnis also pointed out that there is already a, quote, "web of easements" in and around the Long Wharf area, and that these are typically done through legislation, especially in the case of the parcel being a BRA property. Josh Sidney, on behalf of Capital Properties, explained that they were actually unaware of the legislative requirements of the utility installation process until recently. Capital Properties agreed to send more detailed information and meet with neighborhood groups prior to beginning their work. The BPDA had met with the Boston Wharf District Council, which represented a letter of support of the legislation. A new draft of the legislation was being presented at the hearing in which we added standard section four regarding liability to be assumed by the utility company for work done through the easement. We also have received a friendly amendment from our colleague, District One Counselor, who represents the neighborhood. Therefore, docket 1264 will be amended as follows. The addition of section four, as presented at the hearing, modified from the present hearing to clarify the area of the license. This was stated to be standard provision used for BPDA easements and licenses. Amending, quote, Comcast in the legislation to reflect the company's legal name, Comcast of Boston, Inc., as requested by Comcast at the hearing, as well as some technical changes to the legal names throughout. Section five, which shall read, "The Boston Redevelopment Authority, doing business as the BPDA, shall utilize any compensation received pursuant to this act or otherwise expend an equivalent amount of funds for the purposes of furthering climate resiliency in the North End downtown waterfront neighborhoods in the city of Boston." At this time, as chair, I recommend that docket 1264, message in order approving a home rule petition to the general court entitled "An Act Authorizing the Boston Redevelopment Authority to Grant Easements for Utility Purposes Over a Portion of a Certain Parcel of Land Located in the City of Boston," ought to pass in a new draft, and through the chair, offer our district colleague an opportunity to opine on her district.
Thank you. A quick point of clarification. You know, everyone has a copy of the amendment offered by Council Edwards, but Council Flaherty, it's formally already been included in the new draft for us. Awesome. Thank you very much. Council Edward, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Council Flaherty. I really appreciate your leadership and navigating, which was, at some points, a tense conversation. We, the process itself had started off a little bumpy. There was a lack of, I felt, community involvement. And that, I don't want the imperfect process to get ahead of or to impede progress. At the end of the day, these are easements. This is about getting electricity to a building, and it's about making sure that tenants can have, well, they could pay rent and also move in and have local businesses thrive there. That being said, I propose this amendment, which is now part of the formal home rule, to make sure that when the BPDA, this is their property, makes income off of this particular land, that that income goes directly to the neighborhood for resiliency and to protect it. So that, I felt, balanced the needs of making sure that while the process wasn't perfect, the neighborhood does have a voice, will benefit directly, and also make sure the BPDA is working with the neighborhood on resiliency. So I think we balanced it. We got through it, and we did get to some neighborhood feedback on what we needed. So I hope you will support this home rule petition.
Thank you very much, Council Edwards. Anyone else looking to speak on this docket? At this time, Council Flaherty, who's chair of the Committee on Government Operations, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1264 in a new draft. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1264 has been passed in a new draft. Moving on to matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 1111, petition of Flexi Bus Incorporated for a license to operate motor vehicles for the carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston.
Council Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Council Baker for joining this hearing that we had yesterday. The petitioners attended, as well as representatives from the police department and from the Boston Transportation Department, Captain Al Andres from the Hackney Division, Ed Hesford, and Bill Conroy was also there. We went through the standards set of questions about the operations and the plans and the planned pickup locations and routes and fares and all of that. And there were several issues that lead me to recommend rejection without prejudice to allow the petitioners to continue having conversations and resolve some of these issues. First was, as pointed out by the Transportation Department, when doing interstate pickups, so this is mostly a Boston to New York bus route, they need a permit from DPU, from the state regulators, that then will require the Transportation Department and council to have a say there, but this is not the appropriate venue to issue that. Essentially, the route from New York to Boston and back and forth, they were not able to run this head of South Station because there's not capacity there. So the petitioner was seeking to do this out of Dalton Street in Back Bay, near the Sheraton Hotel. The hotel had also sent a representative in opposition because there are already many, many tour buses that pick up from there. There's concerns about pedestrian safety and additional traffic impacts with that. So they have a little more work to do, and I would defer to Council Baker, if he wants to chime in from the hearing, or Council Flynn as the representative for the area to weigh in. But I would recommend a vote to deny this petition without prejudice. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Wu. Council Baker? Council Flynn? Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to say thank you to Council Wu for her great work and leadership on this issue. As Council Wu mentioned, I had the opportunity to visit the owner of the bus line at 1 Dalton Street several months ago. And as Council Wu expressed, there are many challenges of adding another bus to that busy street. And there were some other concerns from businesses in the area about parking and traffic. So I think the company needs to do a little bit more homework and looking forward to getting another update or another proposal from them in the near future. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flynn. At this time, Council Wu, who's chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, recommends that we reject this docket without prejudice, and that's docket 1111. All in favor of the recommendation to reject without prejudice, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1111 has been rejected without prejudice. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1442, Councilor Garrison offered the following: Inordinance Regulating Sober Homes in the City of Boston.
Council Garrison, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to refile this ordinance to regulate recovery homes in the city of Boston, also known as sober homes, because they like sufficient regulations and are being built across the city. As was widely reported in the media last week, there have been serious issues of concern with sober homes across the Commonwealth, and more specifically in the North Show. There was a recent example of sober home's owner who was convicted of financially, emotionally, and sexually abusing the residents of his sober home. Here in Boston, I've seen and heard of sober home's owners making, moving into neighborhoods without proper informing residents. Yet they set up shop and start their operation with very little supervision and regulation from the city. Sometimes the owners of these homes take advantage of residents for their own financial benefit, all while operating in unsafe environment and doing very little to help these residents in recovery. The city of Boston has a responsibility to ensure the sober homes are run in the safest way possible in order to bring about the best outcomes for those who have problems with substance abuse. I believe this ordinance is a concrete step in the right direction to finally regulate sober homes in the city of Boston. Thank you, Madam President, and I ask for suspension of the rules. Thank you, Madam President, and I ask for suspension of the rules and passage of the settlement.
Thank you, Council Garrison. I, I'm seeing a few, few, so I'm assuming for, I see a few, but I would welcome, I'm putting out on the, the floor, there is a, a motion to suspend the rules and pass this ordinance. I'm seeing a lot of faces which assume that I'm going to have some folks actually object to this. Thank you. I see people giving me ayes. So I just want to reflect on the record that Council Flaherty, Council Edwards, and a few are objecting to suspending the rules, which of course then means it has to be assigned to a committee. And just to add a brief clarification on that, part of it is because it is an ordinance, not simply a resolution, which requires obviously more thoughtful consideration when thinking about passing it, because I know folks have thoughts and ideas, but I'll let them speak. I just wanted to put that out there. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Too important an issue just to suspend and pass, but we'll work with the lead sponsor to have an expedited hearing so we can get folks in here from the recovery community and beyond to have a, a robust dialogue with respect to these issues and the issues that the author describes in the ordinance. So, and I'll work with, through the Chair or through her staff to set that up as soon as possible.
Thank you. Council Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo Council Flaherty's comments, but also note, this is an important conversation, and I think it's worth a robust conversation because it's not just about how to keep the folks safe in the sober homes. You're right, in many cases, some communities don't feel that there's notice about the sober home coming, but more importantly, I think that we need to talk about the stigma about people who are in recovery and being able to be integrated into our communities. So that is why this is worthy of a full hearing with many people discussing these things and making sure that we're providing the resources necessary. I want sober homes to thrive. I want people to feel that they can come home and that they can be integrated back into our community, so I don't want this to be seen as a NIMBY type of ordinance to prevent their integration or to prevent them coming in. This is a conversation that we need to have. So I, I actually initially wanted to, I wondered if this is a state-level conversation. I wondered why on earth we, whether we could do this, and Council Garrison, I'm going to happily sign my name onto this if we move into a, a hearing, and I will happily be there to have this robust conversation with you.
Thank you, Council Edwards. Council Janey has the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. This is a very important conversation that we need to continue to have on the Council. It is one, certainly that plagues my district in terms of sober homes just popping up wherever they want and, and not doing what they should be doing for the residents who are in need of services and who are trying to live a sober life. The incident that you mentioned, Counselor, was in my district, and certainly we've had some conversation here in the Council. I think it's important that we continue that conversation to see how we can make sure that there's more equity in terms of access to sober homes. What we learned in our conversations in the past months is that they are very, the ones that voluntarily register with the state are concentrated in certain neighborhoods. Again, it's voluntary. I think it's important that we engage with our state colleagues on this conversation. My understanding is that there are certain reasons why we cannot regulate sober homes because people in recovery are a protected status of people, but it is an important conversation to have to make sure that those who need recovery services are getting them and that they are safe, and that community, that people who need services can access them all throughout the city and not just concentrated in certain neighborhoods. So I look forward to having a robust conversation, and I hope that we engage our state partners in this conversation as well. Thank you. Yes, and please add my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Janey. Mr. Clerk, if you could add, Council Edwards, Council Baker, Council Flynn, Council Janey, Council McCarthy, as well as the Chair. And just for a point of clarification, there was a motion to suspend the rules and pass, which we will not do today because of those objections, but we will instead assign docket 1442 to the Committee on Government Operations. Moving on to late files, I am informed by the clerk that there is one late-file matter, which in the absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Just a point of clarification, it's a letter from our colleague as to why he's absent today. Hearing and seeing no objections, the matter is so added. Mr. Clerk, if you could read it into the record.
From the office of City Council, Josh Zeck. Dear President Campbell, please be advised I will not be in attendance at the Boston City Council meeting on Wednesday, October 9th, 2019, as I will be observing the Yom Kippur holiday. Please ask the City Clerk to read this matter into the record.
And we, of course, wish Council Zeck and his family a wonderful Yom Kippur, along with all other residents who celebrate Yom Kippur today. Doc, the only late-file matter will be placed on file. Anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so now. Moving right along, I am informed by the clerk that there are zero late-file matters for the consent agenda. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda at this time. All those in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is adopted. Any announcements? Council Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to, I wore my pin today, actually, my, my pride pin today, in acknowledgement of yesterday's oral arguments before the Supreme Court. I think it's important that we recognize that while we live in Massachusetts and while we have many rights guaranteed to our LGBTQ community, that unless all of us are truly free and all of us are truly protected, then none of us really are. And so I wanted to just remind the folks on the City Council that what's at stake and what a lot of our, our community members, our family members, our friends, what mental state they may have been in yesterday, knowing that this is up for debate even in 2019. In 2003, we finally got rid of all the laws that banned or found it to be criminal act to engage in same-sex sexual activities. 2015, we finally recognized in a five-to-four decision, so a close decision, the right for folks to marry. And so here we are now in 2019, still arguing about whether someone should be able to work, exist, be free, and be truly American, and be recognized by our Constitution and protected. And it's sad that we're still having that conversation. It's sad that it's even up for debate. And again, we oftentimes in Massachusetts become complicit because we have those protections here, but this is just to recognize, not everyone has those protections. Massachusetts is not an island. We will be working with the other states. We'll be working with people coming for and around and dealing with this issue, and so we need to lead, but we also need to get out there and say, as a City Council, as members, for our constituents, for our families, for ourselves, to be a better body. We stand against discrimination. We stand with the LGBTQ community. We stand proudly with them. And so today, I'm wearing my pride pin a day after the, the oral arguments, and definitely too early for the June Pride Month, but I stand in pride. It's all a day, so.
Thank you very much, Council Edwards. Council O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for unanimous consent to make a brief statement.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Earlier this week, the mayor and his administration released an updated Boston Climate Action Plan. The specific policy proposals that were outlined will help us get to carbon neutrality by 2050. It actually goes even beyond what was originally in the Paris Climate Accord that erroneously, in my opinion, the United States is no longer a member of. This is really good news, really important news. As we have said time and time again, buildings relay, or account for nearly 70% of all greenhouse gas emissions. One of the things I was most proud of in this revised report, and tremendous credit to the mayor and his team for really putting this forward, is going to mandate going forward that all new municipal buildings will be net-zero carbon, which is something we've been talking about for many years in this body, and it's, it's really important to not only talk the talk and, but also to walk the walk. And I've been very proud to partner with Chief Cook, with his team, obviously, with the mayor, and most importantly, with all of you. We first started talking about net-zero carbon in July of 2017. We then had several hearings after that in the fall, in the summer, beginning in the summer, into the fall, into the winter of 2017. In 2018, we had four working sessions. Every person in this room participated in that. From that, we came up with 11 policy proposals. We had an additional hearing afterwards in March of this year, earlier this year. So we've seen some great work, and it's terrific to see a great partnership and see the Council and the administration working together for something that will have an indelible mark on our future, our kids' future, our grandkids' future. And it was just a great win for this body, but more importantly, it was a great win for this city, and most importantly, it was a great win for this planet. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Unanimous consent to make a statement. So Saturday morning, I'm going, going to have a volunteer effort. We're going to the Mason School, which is in behind Clifford Park on Norfolk Ave. We're going to try to, over this weekend, paint all the hallways and the, and the stairways. It'll be a full day, 8:00 till 4:00. If you show up at noon time, I'll give you a hot dog or hamburger. Everybody's welcome to come, audience, also. You're welcome to come. You'll get a hamburger, Mason School. Yeah, please come by, take pictures. You can put them on your face, face, whatever you want to do. Thank you. Face, face.
Thank you, Council Baker. Council Siomo, you have the floor.
Unanimous consent to make a statement. Thank you. I'd like to invite everybody this Friday at noon time for the Italian flag raising. We won't have burgers, we'll have better stuff.
Thank you very much, Council Siomo. Anybody else? All right, this time, I ask all colleagues, staff, and guests to please rise as we adjourn to today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Council Janey, Jeff Worthy, Albert Seals, Charlene Lewis, Austin Johnson, Kevin Grant, Anita Cooper, and Jose Montano. And then for Council Janey, as well as the Chair, Diane Carroll. For Councilors Flynn and Flaherty, Catherine Prentice, who I think we also acknowledged last week, of course, was Eric's mom. Dorothy Pickup. For Council Baker, Ralph Varanis. For Council O'Malley, Margaret Exapheres. And for the entire Council, Christine O'Donald's father, John J. O'Donnell. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. I ask, the Chair moves that when the Council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again in this chamber on Wednesday, October 23rd. So there's a week off due to the holiday on Monday. Scheduled to meet October 23rd, Wednesday, at 12:00 noon in this chamber at Boston City Hall. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The Council is adjourned.